Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified School District. It's December eighth and I will call the meeting to order. Do we have any request? We do not have any requests to speak on items on the closed session agenda. So hearing that, we will recess to close session and we will be back here at about six o'clock. Thank you.
Well, we are back. Welcome to everyone online and in the room. To the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified. Let's see, the report out from closed session, the board did take action in closed session tonight. On a motion by trustee Cusack with a second by trustee Adams. The board approved the appointment of Mrs. Anka Bizatu as the Director of Business Services on a vote of five to zero. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
And I wanted to pull, I was just looking at the agenda, I got so distracted. Which item is it, Amy? I want to pull, yeah, I want to pull HI at this time and bring it back in January. Sometime in January, we're going to work on it a little bit more.
Okay, I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask our student member Jennifer for your preferential vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so the agenda is approved five to zero. The mission statement, trustee Cusack.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. So the board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or either the form itself or the Google form on our website and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment that can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. So, student board member Jennifer, look forward to your report.
Hi, it seems like so long since we met, so I feel like I should have a lot of stuff. Okay, well, I believe the last time we were here, I was talking about the canned food drive at CVHS. And so that finished and we raised over 4,000 cans, which I believe is a lot more than we've had in the past, which is awesome. We've also been having, I actually went to one of those CVHS choir concerts, but there's been the band orchestra concerts, choir concerts at CVHS, Creekside, and Canyon at the CFA. Both last week and this week. And now after the canned food drive, I know a lot of schools are partnering with CV outreach for the adoptive family program. And I believe we're expected to raise around eight thousand to nine hundred dollars, which is really awesome. I also wanted to add that I believe that paper, the online tutoring has been getting a lot more popularity, like I hear a lot of my friends using it more. Also, like there are these posters posted on campus that I think really helps students to like realize it's an actual thing. And that's in handy for our finals next week, Monday, Thursday, Friday. And last thing I wanted to add is that when we return from bake, when we return from break, CVHS is starting to rehearse for their spring musical, which is going to be Grease. So that's exciting. Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So we'll move on, do we have our union reps on? Okay, we'll move on to Mark. Mark.
Hi.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you very much. I don't have much of a report tonight, as you guys know, everybody's working really hard.
Losing you, Mark.
Okay, hold on, can you hear me? Yeah? Can you hear me? No? Oh, 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 gosh. Hello?
Can we read it?
Can you, can you read the closed captioning? I'll tell you what, I'll keep it really brief.
Trying to get you on here.
Testing, testing. Any luck? No? Okay. Hello? No, okay. Okay.
Let us all hear what's.
And can you hear me?
Hi, Mark. Sorry. Okay.
I'll keep it really brief, I hope that everybody has a great holiday season. Keep doing what you're doing, we're doing a great job here at Castro Valley. And we, you know, when we have issues, we work through them and we're going to continue to do that. So I wish everybody a very safe and joyous holiday season, and I hope that you guys have a great time with all of your loved ones.
It's actually working.
Yeah?
It worked, we heard you.
Oh, good. I just need to use my phone next time then, look at that, yeah, but listen, guys, yeah. Hopefully, everybody has a just a really nice holiday and a happy new year, and I'm looking forward to seeing everybody in, geez, twenty twenty-two, wow. So that's it, I mean, it took longer to try to get me to my address, but thank you, guys, for everything you do, thank you for your service. And I'll see you all in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mark, and we hope you have a great holiday as well.
Thank you.
For seeing you. Okay, do we have any requests for public comment? Good, I'm not sure we'd be able to hear them anyway.
No, we cannot. You fixed it.
At any rate, moving along, the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second. Thank you, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the votes, Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you, Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so the consent agenda is approved five to zero. We're down to the superintendent's report.
So I have some updates on COVID and some on other topics. And as far as COVID is concerned, this is, these are updates from the Alameda County Public Health Department, Department of Public Health. So it sounds like cases seem to be stable for the past seven weeks. We heard continuing efforts to get more people vaccinated is huge. Seventy-six point three percent of Alameda County has been fully vaccinated, and that's really great news. Five to eleven-year-olds vaccination, they're making good progress in Alameda County. In fact, I believe you can see on this, on the slide, five to eleven-year-olds, you know, two, two fully vaccinated thirteen and thirty-nine percent. Just from last week to this week, that went up by five percent. So that's great. And over sixty, those over sixty percent of those over sixty-five have already received their boosters and boosters are available, booster is available to everybody above eighteen. So that's great, we should just continue to engage people and say, please get vaccinated. Now, there we go, positive cases. I went too fast, vaccination clinics, vaccine clinics. We have worked with, thank you, Ms. Chan and her team, worked with Clover Pharmacy and Wellness, CVUSD. We have actually hosted the, the ones that I've listed here, Cast, at the Castro Valley Center for the Arts. We had a hundred eight, we had Castro Valley Elementary and Adobe Center, we had eighty-two, and Marshall Elementary, we had a hundred twenty students vaccinated. And then upcoming clinics, we have one more coming at Stanton on the sixteenth of, December sixteenth and January sixth. So that's, that's going to be great, also La Familia will be providing clinics for our community at the Center for the Arts on January sixth and thirteenth. So, and we'll have more details.
Mike?
Harvey, and just to be clear, for Stanton, the priority is for that school community, but if there, if there are extra spaces, or is it open to the entire?
We send information to Stanton first, but it's open to other people. Yeah. So, that's, that's been great. Positive cases, we just have the, this here for you to take a look at, and you know, as we get reports, it's not any different than what we've had before, in fact, it's pretty low numbers. Happy about that. And other district updates, I just wanted to say just a few words about a couple of things that we are starting to hear, because pretty soon we'll be doing enrollment for kindergarten and information nights for transitional kindergarten. I just wanted to kind of share that assembly bill that actually talks about expanding transitional kindergarten. Is actually something we're working with, I know Ms. Chan already attended the training on the funding and what it would look like. It builds upon the, the current TK program to phase in universal pre-kindergarten by providing a year of TK for all four-year-olds with wraparound services. I mean, when you look at the dates, and there's a lot of information you're going to get later on, some of these children are not even four yet. By the time they come in, so it's really important that when we look at programs that we're talking about, like social emotional and collaboration and play and all of that. And it's basically really, they've done this to address the social emotional and early academic development of young kids. And the lower ratio is what a lot of districts are worried about, because basically the, right now, it's twenty, for us, it's twenty-five to one. But this actually bill requires that we lower staff to student ratio to twelve to one the first year, and then ten to one. Now, that doesn't mean a teacher, it just means adult in the room, which means we are going to need a lot of therapy professionals. So, and we've had discussion already about how to support some of that. So there's a lot of work already kind of in place, but we're going to continue to get more information on funding model, I know Ms. Chan has already kind of figured all that out, as well as delivery and timelines, and one of our teachers, Paula Morgan, is actually a part of the group that talks about the program. Not these pieces, but the program, what should it look like? So we'll have a presentation on TK expansion in January or February with much more information. But I just kind of wanted to. We are supposed to be implementing in twenty-five, twenty-five please.
Mike?
That, I know Build Back Better, President Biden's proposal with half universal pre-kindergarten. How does, has ACCA or any of our organizations, have they talked about like how it aligns with this or doesn't align? And then my just second quick question, I thought it was my understanding with the TK expansion, there's, there's some infrastructure dollars that might be available.
So, yes, it is, but basically when Susie kind of looks at the numbers, they want TK and wraparound services, there isn't enough money that we're getting from the state for wraparound services. So the Build Back Better actually is, would be really helpful, because then that could really actually get us the funding we need to do wraparound services if, at school or with other agencies that are in our community, which would be a really glad, glad collaborative effort. So lots of more information coming. One of the concerns that a lot of districts have is the ratio and how quickly they want us to move in that direction, like by next year and the next year after that. I'm already having expanded TK. Lots of districts are struggling with just getting enough teachers and classifieds, so just imagine in a large district, if you have to have, you know, you know, fifty teachers or fifty classifieds, yeah. So there is some pushback against the starting date, which is next year, but I don't know if that has any legs or not. So we'll get more information when we come back to you, have a full presentation, dual immersion. We have hosted multiple informational meetings on dual language immersion and at different, you know, in different groups, over three hundred responses on the DLI interest survey. Results are overwhelming and supportive implementing the DLI program. The teacher job description has been posted on EdJoin and will recruit at upcoming DLI conferences. Informational DLI posters are starting to be posted around the community. Since we had our conversation, and this was something that the board has, you know, has actually given us direction to move forward, I'm getting this started, we have a DLI webpage located on the district website. It's lots of information. Paper, thank you for saying that, Jennifer, because we're really excited about the number, how it's going, I'm really happy, actually. Let's see, Ms. Perator gave me some numbers, eight hundred forty-nine students. And they, that, those eight hundred forty-nine students, they've had thirteen between them, one thousand three hundred seventy-six sessions. Wow. That's really awesome, and five hundred sixty-seven essays uploaded.
Wow.
Wow.
So, much better than, every week it gets better and better, so as kids start talking to each other and saying, hey, it's actually good. So, anyway, this is just some information on, on paper, that it's in over two hundred academic subjects, writing feedback is given, help available in English, Spanish, French, and Mandarin, and after our homework help, you can ask any questions about your subject. I think that's the rest of my, that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
Sorry, but what is dual language immersion? Like, I don't know, just what is it?
Yeah, so we, we had a presentation on dual language immersion, it's Spanish and English. So, and the goal is to start with a transitional kindergarten and kindergarten in elementary school, and what they do is actually during the day when they start in kindergarten, they have ninety percent of their instruction in Spanish, ten percent in English, and then as they move and get older, go through the grades, by the time they're in fifth grade, it's fifty percent English, fifty percent Spanish. Because the goal is to get these students to get to high school and actually be fluent in, in bicultural, bilingual, and by literate in Spanish.
That's awesome, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Our numbers are really good in the COVID, I like.
Yes.
It's really terrific to see all of that. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the personnel report.
I'll move to approve the personnel report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike, it's moved, been moved and seconded, there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the vote, Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
And I will say yes to make it approved by five to zero. Next, we have a public hearing on the accounting of development fees for twenty twenty-one fiscal year. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone online asking? Close the public hearing. The next item is an action item to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one twenty-two regarding accounting of development fees for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty-four twenty-one twenty-two regarding accounting of development fees for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Thank you.
Second.
Dot, thank you for your second, is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll begin the vote, Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so that resolution is adopted five to zero. Do we have, excuse me, next is a public hearing. The notice of adoption of resolution of intention and public hearing to convey an easement. So I'll open the public hearing. Any requests to speak, there are none, close the public hearing. And move on to consideration of the Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one twenty-two, which is to convey an easement to Alameda County for public purposes. I believe this is near CVE.
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty-five twenty-one twenty-two to convey an easement to Alameda County for public purposes.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. Is there any further discussion on this?
Yes, if you could continue what you're about to say, it was in front of CVE, and why are we providing this easement?
It is at the rear entrance of CVE, I believe.
Yes.
It's a small piece of our, we have a path that goes from, is it Anita Avenue?
Anita Avenue, yes, to the campus, correct, and this is.
They want to widen the sidewalks and so forth, this, the county wants to widen the sidewalks, which of course is a good thing. And we're happy to contribute a small piece of that, so is that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike, that's good, because this is actually a good thing that's happening here for everybody's purposes. Okay, so we're down to the vote, and we voted, we're voting.
We need to vote. We need to vote.
Okay, so Jennifer?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, we're getting really good at that, aren't we? And I'll say yes, we're getting really good at that, aren't we? So that resolution is adopted five to zero. Thank you all. Down to the financial condition. See what condition our condition is in here. First interim report. Suzie, we look forward to hearing from you.
Yes. This is that time of year that we are presenting to you the first interim. This is twenty-one, twenty-two, first interim report. So I'm going to go through, I'm going to skip some of the slides here because these are just what you've seen every, every reporting period. Just to give the public an idea of, you know, what the, what the positive certification and the annual budget looks like. So starting with the revenue, revenue that for Castro Valley from the original budget. So original budget for Castro Valley was approved back in June. We did have a forty-five day revise, but we didn't have any changes. And so their compare from prior years, we've always looked at or compared our first interim from the forty-five day revise. But in this case, we did not have any changes. So we're using the original budget. So it's a comparison of original budget to first interim. All of these different revenue sources. So on the, on the left side is the dollar amount and then on the right side is just to show interesting, because that's, it's cut off. Yes, so the, the presentation is cutting off for some reason. But so in looking at the LCFF, the percentage that you're not seeing there is actually, that's about seventy-three percent of our local control funding formula. Or revenue comes from the LCFF. And then you have the federal about eight percent and the other state revenue eighteen percent. So that makes up our, our, the, the revenue for, as of the first interim. And you're seeing a seven, two point, seven point two million dollar difference there. And so the next slide here just shows you the, all the adjustments that's been, that we've made. So the seven point two, that, out of the seven point two, two point seven million dollars is what you approved a few months ago. Which is the ESER, ESER three is what we called, is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. There was a plan, a plan was approved a couple of months ago. And so now that it's been, it's approved, we put it in our budget, in our revenue, and you'll also see it in the expenditure side. We also, last year was the first year we received the in-person instruction grant. And so we did, we are using those dollars over a couple of years. So last year was the first year. And so this is the remaining balance that we're, we've received from, from the state. And so that's in our revenue as well as the, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant and Special Ed. And also like a strong workforce plan and the donations that we received, that schools receive. Including revenue, local revenue for transportation. So on the expenditure side, again, looking at the original budget first interim, you're seeing some changes there totaling almost ten million dollars. So the ten million dollars vary, just different categories there. From salaries and benefits to books and supplies all the way to other outgo. So the changes, the adjustments for, that makes up the ten million dollars is again, what I mentioned earlier is the ESER three that we received, two point seven million dollars to in-person instruction. So when we get the revenue, we also budget the corresponding expenditures. And so that's why you're seeing those in the same slides or from the previous slide. The, the difference between the first, the, the other slide with the revenue versus the expenditures is really about two point eight million dollars. And that's because we had some unspent funds from the restricted funds, from restricted funds that we didn't spend last year and were allowed to carry them over in the current year. So, so if you're looking at the bottom there, the two, the two bullet points there, two million dollars. But we budgeted donations that we received as well as a one point three million dollars carryover for our Title I, Title IV, including the routine restricted maintenance. In looking at, we've looked at revenue, looked at expenditures, now we're looking at our, where we are in our ending fund balance. So our ending fund balance is about seventeen point two million dollars. And then we have all the set aside here, including money that we have set aside for supplemental funds that is not budgeted and, and as of first interim. So reserve for economic uncertainties is eight point two million dollars. So you're seeing a percentage of a slight, you know, lower than what you're used to seeing. And that's because we have our fund, our, our, our total expenditures is higher. So because it's higher, now our reserve for economic uncertainties is lower to, it's down to six point six eight. But during, if we didn't have those one-time funds, then we will be seeing about seven, seven percent, seven point two, seven point five percent in reserve for economic uncertainties. So just wanted to just share that with you because you're, you, in, in, as of adopted budget. We, we shared that it's, we are about seven, close to seven point five percent, but now you're seeing a six point six eight percent. That's because of the one-time funds that are budgeted.
Sorry to ask you. So thanks for explaining that because that made me panic for a moment. So maybe the story from here is that we have about eight million, eight million dollars worth of federal revenues. That revenue is going to shrink big time coming up, right? So that's going to help bring that number back up. And I believe is in our board policy, is it seventeen and a half that we're aiming for? And, and what does sort of a seven percent in the, in the economic uncertainty fund, what does, what does that translate into? Do we think about how many months of payroll are those or?
Yeah, so, so with the eight, the eight point two million dollars that represents about a month of payroll. Yeah. The next slide is multi-year. So what's required as part of our, whenever we submit or prepare our, our interim reports is we're required to include the multi-year, our multi-year projections. So we're looking at the current year and also the next two years. So, so the twenty-one, twenty-two budget is what we've showed you in previous slides for revenue expenditures. And also looking at then our projections for the next couple of years. I wanted to just highlight for you the change in local, local control funding formula of one point five million dollar difference between, from this year to next year. And that is going to be ongoing. And, and this is a slide that you're, I'm sure familiar with because we've shared this with you last year due to declining enrollment. So wanted to make sure that, that we account for them, the enrollment or ADA that we're projecting for next year. Because not, this is not just, it is not unique to Castro Valley, but it's, 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 it's California statewide. That there is an ADA cliff that we're, a lot of this districts are going to experience. So we wanted to just highlight that for you. So it's again, it's one point five million dollars. And so we're looking at the bottom there, six point eight six percent reserve for economic uncertainties. And then it's, it's slowly, it goes down to five point, five, five percent in next year and then three point zero six percent in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Sorry, with our own projections there, just two quick questions. Do we do any local analysis of what we think is happening in Castro Valley in terms of our, of our, and how do we do that? And then what really matters is what's happening in our community. But my sense is our ADA decline is not as dramatic as other districts out there.
Yes, so, so the, the question, for the first question, yes, we do analyze, analysis. So we always look at our enrollment, we work with our student services and, and just looking at what is, what's happening, right? So we do our enrollment, we, we have a report that comes in every Friday just to see the, where we are. So yeah, so including what can we do to, to, like in this case, I know that we're, we've talked about, there's come a conversation about transitional kindergarten. So in order for us to, to, to start getting or increasing our enrollment. The, the other piece, sorry, I, now I forgot the other question, if you can repeat the second question.
So we, we, we're not in as bad situations.
Oh, yeah.
So, but you, you hit on transitional kindergarten to me, in my mind, that helps arrest maybe server, an overall decline if we're welcoming more students over time, no?
Yeah, so there's, it will be, it will depend on the, every district, right? So what we would like to do is really take a look at our, our enrollment and we do a projection. We actually will, we hired a demographer just to see where we are. And I know that, but that hasn't been done in the last couple of years, but this one company will actually do that analysis and that that's. So, and they, and they will include in that analysis because of the, the transition kindergarten is law now. They will include all of that. So we should be able to report to you the, that information in the next couple of months. So the other question about where we are, we're actually, our ADA, our, our ADA rate is pretty good compared to other districts. We are about ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, while other districts may be at ninety-two, ninety-three percent in terms of ADA.
And the decline in many of the districts around us has been much higher.
Correct.
We had, I think we had a chart that we put in the weekly update.
Yeah, so we are at, from last year to this year, it's a one point seven percent. I know that a lot of districts have experienced five, even ten percent decline. So just sharing with you the key assumptions we use to prepare the multi-year projection. The ADA projections due to decrease in enrollment and that's why that one point five million dollars there. We are still, so for twenty-twenty-one, this is just a reminder that we will, we were held harmless. But we're now going to start seeing that reduction next year and that's, as noted in that slide. Our cost of living adjustment, or what we call ZER, COLA, is in the current years, five point oh seven percent. And, and then for the subsequent years, it is, in, in our multi-year, we did not assume a cost of living adjustment. We removed from the, from the subsequent, in the, in the subsequent years, the one-time funds. Mentioned about the seven, almost eight million dollars in federal funds. We don't assume that in the next few years because we knew, we know that those are one-time funds. And so that's why you're seeing a change in the, in the federal funds by, by about seven million dollars. And then of course, and then expenditure, on the expenditure side, we do account for the step in column and all three years. Looking at CalSTRS and CalPERS for all three years, you're seeing that change from one year to the next. And then of course, then the third year. And then the other one-time funds that we eliminated in the subsequent years.
I know Gary's spoken about this before. I mean, those CalSTRS and CalPERS assumptions concern me. And I know in the past, the governor has provided some relief in his budget. But it seemed like last year it was give them a cost of living adjustment in lieu of sort of doing those sort of trying to help that. Do we have any sense from our advocacy organization if the conversation about helping out CalSTRS and CalPERS is coming back if we're going to?
Yeah, so I know that because the, the estate is actually doing well. So we did receive information that the governor, and there are some advocacy out there to, with the about thirty billion dollar more than they project, projected to date, right? To use some of those dollars to fund some of the one-time monies that they, that he gave us. Because we want to continue to provide the services as well as really look at the unfunded liability. So yes, so that is being talked about.
I think the big push from all the advocacy groups, CTA, AXA, everybody is, if you're going to do that, don't do it from Prop ninety-eight. So it's addition outside of Prop ninety-eight. Um, now, Ms. Chan, there's also, I don't know, there is really not a, a serious conversation. But every time we go to meetings, they talk about doing something with this declining enrollment issue.
Yes.
But nothing has been, you know.
Right.
We think it's fair for them to think about that, but.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of options that there, kind of, some ideas that's, that's out there right now. Did do a three-year average ADA, just so it's a kind of the soft landing, pretty much increase base, the LCFF base. So those were the two that, that we're hearing. Okay, and then besides the general fund, we do have other funds. We do from Fund Eight that we, that was recently added to account for all the student activities that we have. So we do now have a separate fund for that. That's, that's the student and that's what it's called. And that's what we have available as of the interim, first interim. And then we have all of the other funds from the pass-through to adult school, all the way to the self-insurance fund. So total of all of the funds, it's nineteen, almost nineteen point five million dollars. And then just, yeah.
What's, what are twenty, what's the use for Fund Twenty-one and Twenty-five?
Yes, so Fund Twenty, Twenty-One is the building fund. This is the Measure G. So this is where we put, put, deposit all of our Measure G funds.
So that's Measure G money?
Correct, that's correct, Measure G. And the capital funds is the developer fees that was just approved, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, and then of course, next, next steps, we'll submit this report pending your approval to the county to review and approve and sent to, send to the state. And then the, we're, we're going to hear the governor's proposed budget and we'll have some information for you on that. And then second interim is coming up in March. Any questions?
Thank you for handling all my questions. I, I just, I, it's been, this year's been interesting. I, I, I hope to think that I know more about school budgets a year into this. But your patience and your knowledge has given me so much confidence about how we are managing our districts. So I just want to thank you for that. I know I provide a lot of questions on this, so thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
I'll make a motion to certify the financial condition first interim report for twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I have a comment, if nobody else does. You know, I think that we're, the good thing is we have money right now, but I still think we're in a tricky, difficult time to keep the boat in the right direction here. So I think it's going to take a lot of attention to the budget over the next year to make sure we're, we don't get into trouble.
Yeah.
So it's encouraging, but I can see some potential problems out there. So any other comments or questions?
Okay, so for the like reserve for student activities, what kind of stuff is that for? Is that like sports and stuff or is that more activities on campus or not sports?
So it's all student body funds, so for all sites. So in this case, it's the secondary sites. So yes, so it'd be whatever funds available or what they deposited and are just waiting to, or in this case, spend depending approval from the student body. So it could be for sports, it could be for clubs, any clubs that, that you have sites. So that's what it's for. Yeah. That's the budget you're in charge of.
It's a new thing because in many, many school districts, there's been a lot of trouble with the student funds. And the state has said enough's enough. So now they're making us, making us track it rather than the schools. So it is a new thing. Any last comments or questions? So we're ready to vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so that is approved, five to zero. And we are on to consideration of the, a plan to use the educator effectiveness block grant money.
Great, thank you. And, and as you may remember, this, it was brought forward at our last board meeting. Uh, it's required to bring these funds back for approval, uh, at this meeting for the second, uh, meeting for a vote. As a reminder, these are funds that are one-time funds to be expended over the next five years. It's approximately one point nine million dollars, so just under four hundred thousand dollars per year to be spent on professional development. Um, and we hope that the board will approve the pa- plan.
Thank you.
I'll move to adopt the educator effectiveness block grant.
And I second that.
Thank you. So we moved in second, uh, Lavender?
I just want to reiterate the great things that are on here. I mean, I don't want to list them all out, but specifically ethnic studies and social emotional learning. Um, it's really going to help make us better, so thank you.
Thank you. Moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote here, uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Not.
Yeah.
And I'll say yes, so it is adopted five to zero. Thank you all. So now the board is going to take about a five-minute recess. And when we come back, we will go through our annual organizational meeting. So we will be back in about five minutes. Thank you very much.
Can I take a point of privilege?
I guess so. It's a little early, but.
Well, we have this gift for you, Gary. Thank you for leading us this year and running these meetings so efficiently.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's been a lot of fun, and I'll be happy to be changed into a back-venturer here shortly. Very shortly, actually. So, uh, for everybody, we reorganize all the board assignments once a year, and that is always in the meeting in December. And we're about to do that. And the first act in that is to elect a new president of the board who serves for one year. And I'll entertain nominations from Lavender.
Yes, I would like to elect Dot Theodore to the office of president.
I'll second that.
Dot has been nominated and seconded.
And I thirded that.
Very good. We should record that in the minutes, the first third. So, uh, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I guess we'll vote on this, uh, Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot, you want to vote?
Yes.
Is that you want to vote, or that you're voting yes?
Both.
Does Jenny vote?
You've, we'd be happy to have you vote.
So pressured. Wait, I just have a quick question. I was talking about this during our break, but, so this voting is different than the thing that happens every four years? Where like the community, like all the vote for DOT posters and stuff like that?
Yes, that's.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just for our nomination for, uh, what we're going to.
Oh, okay. Okay, sure, I'll vote yes.
And it actually just rotates. There's really nothing more than that.
Did you want to vote?
I vote yes.
Yes, thank you. Excellent. Thank you. So Dot is hereby elected as president and is now president. Congratulations, and I wish you a good year.
Yeah, okay. All right, need to find my place. All right, so the next order of business is to elect the vice presidents and clerk of the board. Gary?
I'd like to nominate Lavender Whittaker as vice president.
May I second that?
Great. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, Jenny, your vote please?
I will vote yes, Whittaker.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and, oh, sorry, I'm last, I forget.
You're last, yeah. I'll vote yes.
All right, so. All right. Congratulations, Lavender. All right, appointment of the secretary of the board.
Like to nominate Parveen Amari as the secretary of the board.
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, uh, Jenny, your vote please.
Yes.
Lavender?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's five, uh, five zero. Yay. Uh, congratulations.
Again.
Again.
Okay, now we will review and revise and approve the assignments of board members to, uh, the parent leadership council meetings. I don't have the, thank you.
Oh.
Great. Okay. So. All right, does anybody want to take January nineteenth?
Can I take November sixteenth and March, March sixteenth?
Please. Uh, why don't we just go down the line then? Mike, do you have any preference?
I really don't, I'm happy to be flexible with anyone. I, I'd be happy to take January ninth.
Do you have any, uh, preference? Gary, do you have any preference?
No.
Okay. Um, I also don't have any preference, so. Let's see, there's eight and there's. Well, how about I take January nineteenth, since it's close to my birthday?
I'll take February.
Um, I'll take, uh, August seventeenth is fine. And. And October nineteenth, yeah.
Wait, then Gary doesn't have one.
This is perfect.
Gary, I'm, I'm happy.
Notice that he just sat here letting it happen.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's okay, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, now we're going to move on to the daytime and location of our regular meetings. So currently, we're on the second and fourth Wednesdays. Um. Does that still work for everyone? And then if we look at the second and fourth Wednesdays, are there conflicts that we would like to call out and move those meetings? Oh, yeah. Great, yep, thank you. Okay.
Do we make a motion to, yeah, I would make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, Jenny?
Yes.
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so that's five zero. So you know, the last one E was an action item and we didn't actually vote on it, so let's go back to that. Um.
I'll move approval to review, revise, and approve the assignment of the board members, which are leadership council as, um, assigned.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Um, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, Jenny?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so that's five zero. All right, appointment of board representatives.
Um, Amy, I don't understand the first line, I apologize. The nine, four point five, four, six.
So that's the total, so you want to have it as even as possible?
Oh, got it.
So once you start filling in your name.
Well, right now I've got a lot of points, and I'd be happy to give up the alternate to the CEFA if someone is interested in that.
Am I on the CEFA committee right now?
Yeah, it's a two-year.
Oh.
Then I can, I can take the alternate role. Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to, uh, pull my name from the Alameda County School Board Association, whether it's, um, the rep or the alternate. Oh, so we want me to be there.
Right, so I'm the CEFA alternate, so I, I guess, so there's two of you interested, um, in being the.
ACSBA, yeah.
Right, representative, so Mike and Dolly, so, um, we can discuss this, you guys can figure it out, or we can vote.
Cage mash?
Um, well, we have some other things, uh, we have some other things too. There's board policy subcommittee, both of us want to be on that one too.
Yeah.
One of us go one, one go on the other.
I'm, I'm, I'm more inclined, I'm sorry.
Actually, though, for the board policy subcommittee, I've been on it for a long time, even though I love it. I'd be willing to give it to both of you and tap out for that one if, Mike, you give me the LCAP.
It's all yours.
Thank you.
Okay.
That doesn't involve our cage, that doesn't resolve our cage match issue.
It didn't resolve that issue, but.
Um, you know, Dolly, I, I don't. So do, do you want to?
You do need some points, I see that.
I need some points, okay, let's look down, let's like.
Could you move down so we could see the others? New, new, new information. You used to have LCAP committee, but now it's not even an advisory committee because of all the plans they have changed. So we can actually remove it now.
Okay.
So does that change your calculus, and whether or not you want to be on the policy committee?
I think that's okay, I think it's good to have fresh set eyes.
So I would like to, um, you know, yeah, it'd be nice if we could see below there to see if we have any others. Yeah, we don't, well, yes, no, well. Equity Task. Well, truthfully, I mean, I would like the board policy and Equity Task Force, but I'm not sure how that would work out, points-wise.
And I'm happy to take my name off the Equity Task Force, um, and let, um, Dolly have that position. Not left.
Left, I, I know which way.
So Lav- Lavender, do you want to go into the Equity Task Force?
What are?
Because I know that affects my.
What are our points right now, so we can see? So, Mike, you need points, so.
I need points.
Why don't you take the Equity Task Force then?
I have a question, one of eleven is, um, ACSBA, and there are two people listed, and then alternate, we have three people listed, but some of the people are the same people, so.
You can also take me off as the alternate. You can also take me off as the alternate.
Okay, then. All right, that will help. Whoever wanted, interested, yes, right.
Yeah, so Dolly, for us to figure out is who's going to be the alternate and who's going to.
Do we have anything else? No Equity Task Force, we don't have anything else. Flip a coin, I mean, I would be.
It's you, go for it.
It's a, okay.
And then that makes Mike the alternate.
Yep.
Yes.
Great.
And then there's that one at the bottom. So there's the.
Still has a lot of points.
Yeah, the wellness council needs to be resolved.
Oh.
Oh.
Two people or one?
So right now. Two people.
Mm-hmm.
But right now we have three, but. So you have eight point five. Then you have the, oh, Mike, Mike.
Mike's. But he's not on there.
But there's also nobody for the Center for the Arts and we really, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We're sent and.
Yeah, I think we met once this year.
Yeah, so it's an easy. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
It would be an easy.
I'd be happy to be on that. And so that, that just leaves the wellness council to figure out.
Okay, so it's Dot me, Lavender, right, I'll want to be on that. I mean, I do like that council because, you know, the type of job I do and stuff like that, so I'd like to be on it, but you know what? And you also, I know.
Oh, but I'm not there, so don't worry about it.
You're not on there, so.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Okay, I can do that also since it's. Since you only met one all last year, once.
But that, does that resolve the double book issue on the wellness council?
No.
No, okay.
No, but I thought we just resolved that. Did we just?
Oh, it was?
That was resolved.
Is the point system, I was a lot lower and you had a lot higher.
Okay. Sorry, Gary, I forget, it's me that's supposed to call them people, Gary, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say about the Alameda County School Board Association, you know, even though we have a representative and an alternate, they're always encouraging all of us to attend those meetings because they put out a lot of good information for school board members, so I think anybody can go to them that wants to go, whether you're on our official list or not. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, dude. Yeah. That's pretty easy.
Shall we move to approve this? I would, I will move to approve it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, Jenny?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so that's five zero, it's been approved. Okay.
And Amy, you're going to send this to us, right?
All right, thanks for doing that.
Good.
Is that the end? All right, then that means I will close the, wait, wait. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I will close the organizational meeting. And now. My superintendent.
Lots of school visits, it's so awesome to see students. Today, actually, I was at Casta Valley High School. Lots of just reviews, getting ready for their finals, it's always great to be there. I had a meeting, a really good meeting with the Casta Valley CV, the CV marketplace because they would really like to work with us to offer opportunities for our different schools and different groups to actually have events there and have a collaborative effort where we, you know, like, schools get a percentage of things, so it was great. I actually talked to Greg and Mia, who's one of our parents, working with him as well. And what we are planning on doing is that our next parent leadership council, I would like them to come and present about all the different opportunities and then they're going to invite them over to the Casta Valley marketplace to look at opportunities. So it's pretty exciting. Naming Committee, we actually had our meeting and we are going to come to you in January with the recommendation. And then Legislative Platform Meeting, I know that we, at the state, we are starting to look at legislation for next year. Every year you look at all of the bills that pass, like over a hundred, and you're like, which one's really important for us to pay attention to, a lot on funding. We always want to be involved in that. Let's see, we also had, I mean, I went to performances at CFA. We, yesterday was Women's Clubs event for December and actually the choir with Ms. Sadoway, they all came and they sang beautiful songs inside that building that actually has, Ms. Sadoway was saying, it has just wonderful acoustics. And the Women's Club said they could actually go there and record with a videographer if they want, but it was just beautiful. It, everybody enjoys having them. We actually has a, have a, had an event here for the district office staff with season's eating. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that in January, our board meeting, we actually have a board workshop right before it about grading, standards-based grading, and then right after that is the board meeting, so we'll have dinner for you since it's a pretty long meeting.
Are we meeting earlier?
And we were going to just meet at five unless.
Okay.
You can't, are you able to? I, we didn't want to move it because.
If you provide food, then no.
Everybody's.
I mean, I can go earlier if you have food.
It, we don't have to, I mean, we can just stay, because it's, we know that that's difficult. That's it.
Thank you. Jenny, do you have anything else you would like to report?
Not much, just like Ms. Amati said, focusing on finals. This Friday, the language classes at C V S are doing the thing where they go to each other's classes and do caroling and I'm in Mandarin, so we're doing that. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
I haven't done anything for the board in the last, since we've met, but I will go to the last two sessions of the Black Minds Matter tomorrow night and next Thursday night, and I'll see you all or whoever's attending in the CBOC Measure G Bus Tour this Saturday, looking forward to it.
So since our last meeting was at the Castorelli Educational Foundation, I know that they're planning on having an event in the springtime. For whoever is still on the line, I encourage you to support the Castor Valley Educational Foundation, you know, we're getting close to the end of the year. If you can't do that, please consider supporting your PTA, your parents' club. We really need your support. The Equity Task Force last night, I left comments as I had to leave the meeting. Jason, so powerful, I want to sort of keep the confidence of conversation in there, but that, going to those task force meetings have helped me make so many connections. And so I want to just express my gratitude and to anyone out there. If you're in our district, part of our district, this is a fantastic way to be a part of our district, being a part of one of these committees. So thank you. And also, I haven't been able to attend all of Black Minds Matter, but how you've transformed that is just incredible. The curriculum is fantastic, I'll try to be there tomorrow, although I do have a conflicting conflicting concert to be at at Creekside, but I just wanted to acknowledge those two things. And then, of course, the Measure G Bus Tour this weekend, and I just want to reflect, this has been my one year here, and I just want to share with everyone in the district, everyone who is welcoming to their schools, answered my questions, just thank you. It's been a year of transformation, it's been a really tough year for all of us. And I see the work that this district is doing to transform lives and it's really inspiring. Thank you.
Okay, so I went to the Wellness Committee meeting a couple nights ago and it was a very good, productive meeting, we met in our groups. We reviewed the goals from 2017. Two of the three goals were met outright. The other goal is like in progress, there's some, you know, it has been better, the, I'm a little bit blanking on the third goal, but the first goal was about a website that we created so that parents had access to all the menus and information about the food service. And that's up, it's running, parents can see the menus. They are able to, of course, provide the free breakfasts and lunches all across the district, which is really great. They, there is a, you know, was a push to do the best to get the applications in. I don't know exactly what they're called, but the applications for, it was called Free and Reduced Lunch back then, but of course it does many other things, funding for the district. And that's, you know, one everything we'll look at to make sure we get that to help with funding for the district in the future. And so the communication for students to, for every student to have a, like, buddy adult, I may not be using the language, but to have a advocate, I think that was the word that they used, is there's a lot of progress on that, but of course we asked for a hundred percent and of course it isn't at a hundred percent, so that will be an ongoing goal. And next time that we meet, we will be looking at the three new goals we have. And I too, this is my first whole full year here, I've seen now the whole cycle. It's a very, it's a joy really to be here with the other four board members, I really, you know, and, and the superintendent and all of the cabinet people here. Castor Valley unifieds a great district.
So I was able to visit Creekside last week and had a very good meeting over there with our principal who I'd sort of met face to face for the first time after not having been able to, to get over there in the COVID. Last night, Parveen and I were at the CVE PATA meeting and had a good time there. They had a lot of questions, it was a good meeting. And finally, I want to bring up something, you know, that, to talk about, and that is, since we started the Wellness Center, we focused it on behavioral health, we've always wanted to expand it beyond that. And last week, Parveen and I and Nick McMaster and Marion Meadows met in a meeting set up by Cliff Sherwood with Tiberio Vasquez. And we have a possibility there, they're interested, we are interested, they have clinics in in James Logan and in one other one down in Hayward in high schools. And there, if you look on their website and see the services they offer in terms of physicals and vaccinations and sort of minor injuries and first aid and that kind of thing, it would be really perfect for us if we can work it out. So the first meeting was very encouraging, they're going to come up and look at our facility and then a group is going to go down and look at James Logan, I think, to see what they have down there. And we'll see where it goes from here, but this is, I think, a really big deal, a potentially a very big deal. There's a lot of devil, devils in the details, but we're really looking forward to seeing how that plays out in the future. So I think that's good news and that's all I have.
That's actually really exciting because when we were first on that Wellness Committee, that was the vision, right, was to have a school-based health center. But the money wasn't there from Kaiser as they sort of led us to believe it might be. So this is very exciting.
Oh, Dot, that was the third goal, of course, that was completely met, was the Wellness Center. Okay, and then all of the middle school now centers that are open and whatnot.
All right, and then me, I, the naming committee was the only thing that I've attended. And thank you for helping me attend it. I had my COVID booster that day and there was a scheduling mix-up, so Parveen graciously phoned me in so that I could participate, but the discussions were great. Yeah, so I'm glad that that ended well. And then tomorrow is the Eden Area R L P meeting. It's usually the first Thursday, but many of the board members were, I guess, at the convention, the board member convention, whatever that's called. All right. That's it, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.